If everyone can take their seats, we're going to get started. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, September 26, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone who's here in our city council chambers, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd like to welcome the audience watching on Cable Channel 22.
Clerk, council mics are open, please call the roll. President?
For Allen? Councilmember Seer? Councilmember Gordon Young? Councilmember Grab? Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Euler? Councilmember Riegenbach? Councilmember Valpula? And Councilmember Vespa?
Here.
Yeah, a quorum present, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Madam Clerk?
We have three proclamations. Okay, I've asked for some assistance with the proclamations tonight. The first proclamation recognizes banned books week. And we have Mr. Randall Yelverton, the Executive Director of Peoria Public Library, and Alice Jackson, the Manager of Programming and Head of Central Illinois Reads. Welcome. And Councilwoman Bernice Gordon Young will read the proclamation. Thank you. Sorry, that's incorrect. Councilmember Mike Vespa will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the American Library Association and Peoria Public Library are recognizing National Banned Books Week from October 1st through October 7th. Once again, they have joined forces with several sister libraries and other community partners to celebrate everyone's freedom to read. And whereas the Central Illinois Reads partnership has brought new attention to the surge of book challenges and bans across the country through a variety of special programs and events, including bringing nationally known yet challenged authors and persecuted librarians to Central Illinois. And whereas this unique partnership garnered statewide attention, including a special invitation by Illinois Secretary of State and State Librarian Alexi Genoulias to witness the historic passage of House Bill 2789, first-in-the-nation legislation to ban book bans. And whereas our local libraries, including Peoria, Chillicothe, Dunlap, Fond du Lac, Illinois Prairie, Morton, and Pekin, along with additional partners Bradley University, Methodist College, and Neighborhood House, will continue to shine a light on the harmful impacts of censorship. Now therefore, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, encourages all residents to unite against book bans and censorship and to celebrate individual freedom to read and to hereby recognize and proclaim October 1st through October 7th as National Banned Books Week.
Thank you.
So Yelverton?
Thank you, Mayor Ali, and members of the council for allowing us to promote an important week that's coming up. National Banned Books Week is October 1st through the 7th, and it's an annual event that highlights the value of free and open access to information. Peoria Public Library has some special events planned for that week, which we hope people will participate in, and displays at each of our locations that will feature some of the most often-challenged and banned books. You might be surprised at the books you'll find on the list. Classics like To Kill a Mockingbird and Catcher in the Rye. Bestsellers like the Harry Potter series, and even the dictionary. Both the American Heritage Dictionary and the Merriam-Webster Dictionary have been banned at one time or another. Banned Books Week is also the culmination of Central Illinois Reads, a powerful partnership focused on the freedom to read. Peoria Public Library and our partners, Six Sister Libraries, Bradley University, Methodist College, and Carl Health, as well as Neighborhood House, have spent the past six months focused on one of the greatest freedoms we all enjoy: the freedom to read. Fortunately, Illinois is one state that is pushing back against censorship in the midst of the highest number of book bans nationwide in more than 20 years. Secretary of State Alexi Genoulias, who is also our state's head librarian, initiated the first-in-the-nation legislation, first of its kind, that basically bans book bans. Peoria Public Library, because of the Central Illinois Reads partnership, was one of just three libraries in Illinois invited to the Capitol to witness passage of this historic legislation. I'm now going to turn it over to Alice Jackson, who's the Head of Programming at Peoria Public Library and the Chair of Central Illinois Reads, and she's going to talk about the work that that group did over the past six months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randall, Mayor Ali, city council members. Every year for more than 20 years, Peoria Reads has chosen one book for our community to unite around and read together. This year, however, we knew we must come together to support one of our greatest freedoms: the freedom to read, and that we should celebrate this not only in Peoria but across Central Illinois. So I'd like to thank our Central Illinois Read partners: Chillicothe Public Library, Dunlap Public Library District, Fond du Lac District Library, Illinois Prairie District Library, Morton Public Library, Pekin Public Library, Bradley University, Methodist College, and Neighborhood House. This amazing group spent the past six months putting together a wide variety of programming. In April, we welcomed Dr. Emily Knox, a professor from the University of Illinois who's known for her work with the National Coalition Against Censorship and the Fight for Intellectual Freedom. And in August, we hosted award-winning and bestselling author Lori Halz Anderson, who has had a number of her young adult books challenged and banned all across the country. She speaks regularly on the freedom to read. Right after this event tonight, we are headed to an event at Fond du Lac Library with the Assistant Director of Programs from the American Library Association's Freedom to Read Foundation. She will discuss the current state of book challenges in the U.S. and how the First Amendment is related to libraries. We also have several events planned for Banned Books Week, including a banned books trivia program on Sunday at North Branch; everybody should sign up and participate, and a panel discussion at Bradley with ACLU and others. Please check our website for a complete listing of programs. As Randall said, we're seeing record-breaking book bans in many parts of the country. But another disturbing thing we're seeing is criminal prosecution of school and public library staff for providing "harmful" books to children. According to The Washington Post, there are seven states that have passed similar laws in the last two years, and another dozen states still considering similar bills. So you can see why it is so important for us to take a stand and support banned and challenged authors, as well as the teachers and librarians across the country. Thank you so much for your time, and now go read a banned book.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Yelverton. Thank you for your leadership in reading and literacy and banned the ban. Appreciate it. Our next proclamation recognizes National Preparedness Month, and we have Jill Stowe, Preparedness Planner for the Peoria City County Health Department. Thank you, Ms. Stowe. Now, the proclamation will be shared by Councilwoman Bernice Gordon Young. Oh, hold on, let me get you. There we go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every community member in the City of Peoria to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, our businesses, and our communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Ready Campaign and other federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies are working to increase public activities in preparing for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action. And whereas emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every community member in the City of Peoria, and all residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. Now therefore, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as National Preparedness Month in Peoria, Illinois, dated this 26th day of September 2023 A.D.
Thank you. Ms. Stowe?
Thank you, Mayor Ali, and the council members as well. The city council is appreciated; the recognition by the city council is appreciated, along with the support from the city staff. Our program is both city and counties, as well as the Peoria City County Health Department's Public Health Emergency Response. This allows for comprehensive approaches and effective use of funding. Our mission is to support the training, planning, and coordinated work around mitigation by reducing potential severity of an emergency, preparedness with the measures for preserving life and minimizing damage, responding to disasters and emergencies, and provide assistance as needed, and the recovery by return to a normal state as normal as possible, all with the goal of creating a resilient community. Thank you again for your time and your recognition.
You're welcome. Thank you. Our final proclamation recognizes the 50th anniversary of Moss Bradley Residential Association, and we have Ms. Jan Kraus, the President of that organization, as well as Ralph Amen, the Vice President. Councilman Grab is going to share the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, and this is from Counselor Jackson and me, who represent the area that is bounded by Moss Bradley, the Residential Association for Moss Bradley. And I want to thank Stacy Peterson, our Communications Director, for working closely with all of us, including Moss Bradley Leadership, to put this proclamation together. It's not every day that we can celebrate a golden anniversary. Whereas neighborhood associations serve a vital role in fostering a sense of belonging and cooperation among neighbors, the Moss Bradley Residential Association has served its residents on the West Bluff of Peoria for 50 years in striving to maintain one of the city's foremost heritage neighborhoods. And whereas leaders of the Moss Bradley Residential Association, from presidents, officers, and board members, to neighborhood influencers, have served to create this neighborhood rich in tradition, ongoing vibrancy, and rich in diversity. And whereas the Moss Bradley Residential Association has promoted community engagement through events like the Well-Attended Moss Avenue Sale; it's an annual tradition that welcomes visitors from all around our region to partake in local music, shopping, delicious food, all with the backdrop of the lovely historic homes under the verdant canopy of the trees which line Moss Avenue. And whereas the Moss Bradley Residential Association has also cultivated a strong sense of community with the annual Hanging of the Greens on the light posts, as well as an outstanding July 4th celebration, which features storytelling, live music from Peoria Pops Orchestra, ice cream, et cetera. And whereas the Moss Bradley Residential Association has something for everyone, many people enjoy the prairie architecture of the only Frank Lloyd Wright home in Peoria, the original Francis W. Little house. And whereas history lovers can appreciate the Pettingill Moron home, built in 1868 and on the National Register of Historic Places, those wanting to sink deep roots into this neighborhood can attain home ownership through the Moss Bradley Revolving Fund. And whereas the Moss Bradley Residential Association has fostered and developed a sense of community, neighborhood pride, and beautification, whereas the Moss Bradley Residential Association has been a model for the importance of strong neighborhoods and a strong Peoria, where a group of like-minded individuals have worked to stabilize, protect, and grow a thriving neighborhood within the city. Now therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge the golden anniversary of the Moss Bradley Residential Association dated this 26th day of September 2023.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mayor Ali, and thank you, city council. I'd like to give a special thank you to council members Jackson and Grab, and also to Stacy Peterson for helping obtain this proclamation. So thank you all. A heritage neighborhood really faces unique challenges, but we also have some unique opportunities. And the kudos go to the people that live in Moss Bradley. These same people become officers of the association, they become board members, they're neighborhood influencers, and volunteers behind the scenes. But what they're doing is giving their time and their talent to creating a strong neighborhood association, and that has resulted in Moss Bradley being a strong, vibrant, and growing neighborhood. Thank you.
Welcome. Very welcome. All right, Madam Clerk?
We are at the Approval of the Minutes.
Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve of the minutes of the joint time board and city council meeting held on September 12, 2023, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the Consent Agenda. 23-318 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve an engineering services agreement with Baxter and Woodman, Inc., for the Spring Street Complete Green Street Project in the amount of $561,400. 23-319 is a communication with a request concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to deny an ordinance rezoning property from a Class C Neighborhood Commercial District to a Class I-2 Railroad Warehouse Industrial District for the property located at 304, 306, 310, and 314 Edmund Street, and 204, 206, 208, and 214 Southwest Center Street, Peoria, Illinois. 23-320 is a communication with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R-3 Single Family Residential District for a short-term rental for the property located at 2221 West Gerald Court, Peoria, Illinois. 23-308 is a communication from the City Manager, Corporation Council, and Director of Public Works with a request to adopt an ordinance proposing the West Lamont Avenue Special Service Area. 23-296 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance amending the city council rules regarding electronic attendance to include for unexpected childcare obligations. 23-310 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 18, Article 14 of the Code of the City of Peoria Regarding Cigarettes. 23-311 is a communication with a request concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code, relating to retail tobacco sales. And 23-309 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance repealing the temporary moratorium on tobacco licenses, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm 23-318.
Any other items? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-318 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve an engineering services agreement with Baxter and Woodman, Inc., for the Spring Street Complete Green Street Project in the amount of $561,400.
Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pulled this because I think this project is significant enough that it needs a little shout-out, if you will. While this is the very first step in a long process, and all the funding is not yet in place, this is going to allow the engineering to begin. Spring Street can, has the potential to be an incredible gateway to the riverfront for the North Valley, and I think it's important that we embrace this. And I'm particularly pleased to hear the terms, not only "complete street," but "complete green street" project. I think this just shows our commitment to that methodology, and this first allotment of money that we're approving tonight will be for the preliminary design analysis. So it is preliminary, to say the least, but this will get the ball rolling, if you will. And it will be looking at the different green infrastructure alternatives that are available, with permeable pavers, of course, and bio swales, and some things that we're starting to see pop up in the CSO projects that the city is undertaking. Importantly, for most drivers, will be the reconstruction of the street itself with new curbs and gutter and drainage, and then, of course, with the complete street concept that will include sidewalks up to the ADA standards that we need and expect today. So I just want to thank the Public Works Department for their work in getting this project up to this point, and would move for the approval.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Did you have any additional comments, Director Powers?
Actually, I believe the council covered it well. This is a pretty significant project, probably a shout-out to Senator Durbin, just wasn't your mark. Well, sorry. What is the correct term now? Congressional-directed spending, I'm sorry. I'm so used to saying "your mark." So shout-out to him for actually getting these dollars for us to do this study. But it will be, overall, I believe, around a $9.5 million project, and a grander vision of what we're trying to do overall in the city, the Vista-type approach and corridors toward the water and the riverfront. And, you know, going again beyond what we're doing with Riverfront Park, just really trying to take back the river city's riverfront. And I think Spring Street and that approach to the river is just really going to make a huge difference when we actually are able to realize this dream. So hopefully the funding does come available and we can make this happen.
Great.
That's all that I would offer.
Okay, thank you. It's a very exciting project. Any other comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at Presentations. 23-321 is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to receive and file the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, audited by Clifton Larson Allen, LLP.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask our Finance Director to come forward, and he's going to introduce Mr. Adam Polley, who is from Clifton Larson Allen, who will walk through the 2022 Audit Results and Findings.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Tonight, we have Adam Polley with Clifton Larson Allen, who is the in-charge on our audit every year, and he'll run through a quick overview of the highlights from the financial report. So I'll turn it over to Adam. All right. Thank you, everybody. I will keep my comments pretty brief and just touch on the audit results. First and foremost, we did issue an unmodified, or in other words, a clean audit opinion over the city's financial statements, as well as the single audit report. The single audit being the city's compliance with federal grant compliance requirements. Now, during our audit, we did come across, I'll call them three reportable conditions, two findings, and one recommendation. I'll go in order of magnitude. First one being, we did come across some material audit adjustments, some that I would suggest were anticipated, others perhaps not. At the end of the day, management of the city did review and approve all of the proposed audit adjustments, but because we cannot be considered part of the city's internal control structure, we do have to note that as a material weakness finding. Secondly, as it relates to the single audit, again, the federal grant compliance, we had three major programs that we tested this year. One was the Economic Development Cluster. Within that testing, we tested 11 reports to test for accuracy, timing of submission, and in those 11 reports, there were three that were submitted late, so we noted that as a finding. Lastly, one recommendation that we came across didn't rise to the level of a finding. Annually, we test a sample of both fire pension, as well as police pension census data, to ensure that the birth dates, the hire dates that the actuary utilizes to issue their actuarial report is accurate. So in total, between the two pensions, we tested 44 items. We came across one in which the birthday was not correct, so we brought that to management's attention, just to try to remain diligent in that information. Otherwise, that's really all I had to present. Certainly want to thank management of the city. I realize I was only up here for a few minutes, but the audit itself is a very long, strenuous process, so we certainly appreciate the Finance Department, as well as anybody else within the city that had taken part and helped us out in that collaborative process.
Thank you. Anything additional, Mr. Manager?
Just overall, I think that you'll see in the audit that the change in net position was very strong for this past year. I think overall, we had about a $57 million increase in our net position, 24.5 million increase in the general fund, an additional increase in the other governmental activities in our business activity funds as well. So overall, a pretty positive year financially.
Thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was hoping to ask a question to Mr. Hayes before the presentation as a point of order, but I will be voting not, I don't, it doesn't mean anything, it's filed and received, but I will be voting not to file and receive this report since we just got it an hour before the meeting. I don't even have a chance, or none of us had a chance to read any of it, so I don't know, some of us might not even be interested, but I'm just, the six years I've been here... know, some of us might not even be interested, but I'm just, the six years I've been here, when this happened, it just really upsets me. I mean, we don't even have a chance to read on something that we got to vote on. So anyway, I know it's not important, but this is my objective, to file and receive when we only have a chance to read the material. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, you and I had a conversation, I can't find it now, the TIF, where is the item that you and I spoke of?
Yeah, so specifically what you and I spoke about, I believe, is around page 160 in the report. What we had talked about was just the clarity around some of the transactions in our TIFs, in terms of transfers in, transfers out, and those kind of items. Because of how the presentation looks, there's not a lot of clarity as to what those are. And so really what a lot of those are, are for public improvements that are allowed under the redevelopment agreements. We have some also that are related to our debt payments. And one of the things that I have talked with Adam about, and we are looking at this year as ways that in the future reporting, maybe we can clarify what some of those dollars are. Would you file an annual comptroller's report on each of these, that there is some more clarity in terms of what those dollars are used for? But that's something we can definitely do for future audits.
Thank you, Director Craddy. The problem that I had was that with a number of these TIFs, we had money that was taken out of the fund, and there was no info about where it went. Now, I don't have any doubt that it went to the right place, but it is just out, and it's impossible, almost, to find, again, especially if it's going to two different places. And so I appreciate your thought on just putting a little note on there, saying, "This is going for a capital project in this TIF, and it's, you know, a street improvement," or, you know, whatever. That will be helpful. Otherwise, it's kind of opaque as to what's going on. So thank you, Director Craddy.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm going to move to defer to October 7th, so that we have an opportunity to look at this over.
That's seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any other communication?
Sorry, 10th, October 10th.
October 10th. Mr. Manager?
I just want to point out, the audit was sent to the council electronically. It was in the packet, it was posted. The hard copy was delivered to your desk today. But it was delivered, it was noticed properly, it was issued, the public could see it, council could see it if they looked at it electronically.
Thanks for that clarification.
Just want that clarified for the record.
We have a motion to defer until the next council meeting in October. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Kelly?
Not to beat a dead horse, it's almost dead. But this was out last week, but no one uses the electronic facility that we have, which is so good, so powerful. And it was, if we wait for the paper, and then, once we wait for the paper, it depends on when we can get to City Hall to pick up the paper. This is, I think this was out on Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. Just another plug to use from the old guy on the council, to use this wonderful facility we have, and we'll save a few trees in the process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. The motion is to defer. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Kelly, I do use the iPad, so you're not the lone one, but I did get a chance to look it over, but I'll support my colleagues in the deferral today. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. No disagreement with Councilmember Kelly, but if we're going to do things, it should be consistent, and if it's on paper, it should all be paper. If it's electronic, it should all be electronic. I don't want half an agenda electronically and another half on paper. Thank you.
The motion is to defer to our next meeting, our first meeting, in October. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-322 is a communication from the City Manager and Assistant City Manager to approve the Peoria Civic Center Budget and Annual Report.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item says it was a request to approve the Civic Center Budget and the Annual Report. The budget was not included in the packet, so that'll come back to you on October 10th. But we do have a presentation from the Peoria Civic Center Authority through Rick Edgar, their general manager, so if you don't mind, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Edgar.
Absolutely. Mr. Edgar, welcome.
Thank you.
You have slides?
I'm waiting for the, I'm advancing.
When that comes back, Mr. Manager, when that comes back, I heard something about it being on consent, but there may be some questions.
No, we'll be happy to put this on regular. It won't come back on consent.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Everyone, I'm going to try to be cognizant of the time here. We just had our best financial year in the history of the venue that we just wrapped up on August 31st. Content-driven results. Our net income was up over $1 million, of our best fiscal year ever coming into this year. Our adjusted gross income was 7.1 million. We've only had two years where it was over 6. And we also became a Tier 1 Ticketmaster facility. What that does, that puts us up into the elite class of Ticketmaster, and it means we had to sell a minimum of 175,000 tickets online to our events this year. Probably the best slide out of here is we paid more than $1 million in taxes directly from our event. So while often it is seen as that we are given tax money to run our venue, we actually contribute more in taxes that come back to that HRA than we actually take in. This year was the first year where we were over $1 million, and you can see the, we did skip 21 because that was the COVID year, but you can see those numbers keep going up. So the more events, more revenue we're driving, the better it is, and less is the taxpayer's burden directly on the venue. Some of the big numbers that we had this year, and I'm going to point out a few, we had over 452,791 guests. These are guests, these are not employees in the building, these aren't other folks, these are actually documented ticket buyers and folks that went through a turnstile. We did 352 event days out of 365. 142 ticketed events. One of the things that we're really proud of is that we donated more than 2,000 tickets to charity, a lot of those to veteran organizations and to folks who just can't normally come to a show. We often donate and help others raise funds for their organization. We set a concessions revenue this year at $3.1 million, gross sales, 13 million in ticket sales, and our net income was $6 million from the events. We believe in investing in infrastructure. The most important thing we can do is invest in our people. When we had the COVID shutdown, we identified 17 staff members that we felt like we needed to retain. I am happy to sit here today and say, "All 17 are still with us." Our industry in particular has had a lot of job poaching, folks leaving. These folks are committed to our mission and are staying with us, and it's leading to great results. We purchased a decorating company, Peoria Expo. We paid for it in the first six months of owning it, and we generated $400,000 in new business on that line item alone this year. Our parking system, when we went to the parking system, we increased our revenue by 75% and lowered our expenses by 300%. Again, we're trying to do well by the taxpayers' dollars, say better, taxpayers' dollars, to be able to get, not only drive revenues, but also guest experience. And probably the one that's on here that we're really proud of is our capital investment. Over the last year, we've fixed our HVAC, our boilers, and LED lighting. Our gas usage is down 50% over annual. Our electric was down 21%. Those two numbers alone, based on today's rates, saved the taxpayers over $202,000 just by the reduced usage. And by the way, we use the building more than we ever have in the last 10 years. Capital projects, I'm going to point out that first picture, that was our drainage system on our roof. You can see it had collapsed within itself because we did not have the money to fix it. So that's why we had leaks. Those were the things that we were dealing with. On the right, you can see the wide picture. We have now fixed that, so we're hoping to rectify any leaks in the building, and we've got most of them now, to give a better guest experience. The arena sound system was just installed this past week. We're now putting in lower bowl retractable seating that has been needing to be replaced for about 15 years, and now it's going to be added safety for guests that come to our shows with handrails that we didn't have previously. Also on docket for this year are the dressing rooms, and there's a list of projects that we sent in your package that you can look at. The ones that are going to be noticed by the public in the next two years is we're replacing our scoreboard, the ribbon boards around the building, and we're also going to repurpose the current scoreboard screen to go out front when you come in for games. This was a direct ask of Bradley University with the basketball team to up their game as they're battling other universities for quality athletes in the NIL environment. We've been restructuring our business models to get return on investment on the taxpayers' dollars. Our HRA allocation for convention center events, you often have to incentivize a group to come to the community. In 2019, we were getting $1.03 on a direct return for every dollar we spent. I'm very happy to report that Bo Sutherland and his team has got us now to $5.45, so for every dollar we spend, we get $5.45 back in the venue. That does not include the money spent on restaurants, hotels, so it's a great investment. We're utilizing those dollars to their fullest. We also changed how our incentives were. It used to be, we love big events. We had 6,000 hotel rooms. We don't have 6,000 hotel rooms in downtown Peoria. And now, to get incentive dollars, you have to spend the money where the taxpayers who fund our building have interest. So it has to be spent in the city of Peoria to get those dollars. If they fall short, they can stay wherever they want, but if they fall short, then the incentive dollars go away. We've had a little more flexibility on deal structures, and I think that has really been a key. We listen to our folks who want to work with us and find out where their pain is. We help satisfy that pain and bring them to the market. And in tenant contracts, one of the things that we're doing is trying to help our tenants get to more people. And a great example is the Peoria Symphony Orchestra. They've been relatively stagnant, and we went with them, and we've now put together a plan to help them outside, get more people into their events, and we've now introduced them to our 56,000 list of emailers to try to get more people into the symphony. In the convention center, here's some of the events, but I've got a slide later that's going to touch on the two events here, the volleyball and Pokemons, I'm going to come back to that. Why ASM Global? That's the company I work for, so people all the time go, "What does ASM Global do for us?" Well, directly, ASM Global has given them $1 million to the PCCA under this current contract to reinvest in Peoria and into the venue. Those are real dollars that they brought into the deal. Industry recognition, so many doors open for me when we go on these tours because we can say we're an ASM Global building. If you go as a solo person, it's very hard to get in with agents and promoters. Our regional marketing, we now have the Regional Marketing Director in our venue for ASM, which that means is we get the tips on the things when they're new first, and we get first shot at them. In our new Ticketmaster deal, I mentioned, we went to Tier 1. Our deal is stronger than any of our competitors in the state outside of Chicago, which means we have an advantage that we can share with our promoters that makes us a more attractive venue for them. Also, the thing that I'm really happy is our authority has seen the relevancy of ASM Global and what we've brought to the market, especially in the last few years, and our contract has been extended, so we're here through August 28th. We couldn't be happier. This is just a small list of the meetings that we've gone to, to go to the clients and bring things in. One of them I wanted to point out was IIBA, it's the International Association of Booking, Entertainment Booking Agency. That panel, getting in front of all those industry leaders is a big deal. We didn't have one, we had two people out of about 100 speakers over the four days. So we got touches and directly got shows out of being on that panel. We're the number-two market in the state of Illinois. This was, Pollstar put this out, and I want to be clear with this, a lot of markets get combined. So Davenport and Moline are combined, then you have Springfield, you have Champaign, you have Rockford, you have Bloomington. We're number-two in the state. We have a DMA of 118. We're now in the top 90 in the country, and we're one of the few venues in Illinois that's on the rise. So the extra inventory we've been bringing in is being noticed by the industry. We also do multiple things all the time, and one of our favorite nights was December 3rd of this past year. Harry Connick Jr. set the highest grossing concert ever in the theater. At the same time, we had sold out the arena with Pentatonix. It was a fantastic night. But it wasn't just a one-hit wonder. We've also broken multiple records this year. Hot Wheels Monster Trucks set the record for motorsports this year. We also had kind of a fun thing with our comedy show. Gabriel Iglesias had set the record in March of '22 for highest grossing show. Bill Burr broke it in November, and then Burt Kreischer, as you can see him with our new comedy champion belt there, reset the record in March of this past year. We really believe in total utilization. One of the things that separates us from our competitors is they usually have an arena or a theater. Very few of them have both outside of the Chicago market. On this weekend, and this is a real thing, we had over 16,000 guests. At the same time, we're breaking records with Burt Kreischer. We also had two Rivermen hockey games in the arena. We had Ren Collective in the theater. We had a roller derby event, and we had the Sports Hall of Fame. All of those, aside from the hockey games, all happened on that Saturday. The hockey games were on Friday and Sunday that weekend. Our two tenants in the arena, the Rivermen Hockey Team and Ben's Basketball, we're really happy to say that both of them were regular season champions this past year, and we're hoping they build on that success to even bring more folks to our new venue. This is one that's a little touching for us. We always say, "You never know when it's the last time you're going to see a true legend in concert." We had Buddy Guy, who put on a phenomenal show. Frankie Valli, at 89 years old, put on a hour and 45-minute show and just blew the place away. But the one that's a little melancholy and a little sad, but also wonderful, is Gordon Lightfoot. His last time he ever performed live in the United States was right here in Peoria. He played nine shows after this in Canada and passed away. So that was truly an honor that we are going to be in the record books of all time of being this last show. These are the pie charts for our different venues, and on this one right here in the theater, what we like to see is a little bit of balance. So the pie charts for attendance, event days, and revenue, we like it when they kind of line up. What this tells us in the theater is, we do know that concerts make a little bit more money, and the one to point out is the performances you'll see in revenue, they're a little smaller, but that's because that also includes local events, which are events that we do for the community and are not intended to be revenue generators. So the pie right here is about where we would expect it to be for the theater. In the arena, we've noticed a challenge, a change, is while the concerts are fewer, they're about a third of our entertainment options, they drive 70% of the revenue. But the thing that's really interesting is on attendance, we get about 50% of our folks that come through the door in the arena come to those concerts every year. In the convention center, the pie's a little bit different. We're recognizing that the convention center business is doing really strong, and the one part of the pie here that we wanted to point out is the gray in revenue, that other, that's that Peoria Expo number. That's the new business that we've brought in, is now a sizable chunk of our pie. And we've also noticed when we do things that other people can't do, that's when we're successful. If you'll notice, our banquet, while it's a good bit of our business, the revenue is much smaller because we're competing with hotels and banquet halls all in the city, and it's something that can be done in multiple places, so that's one of those businesses we love doing them, but it's not always the best business for the venue. So now we've got to look at what's coming up ahead, future considerations. We're doing arena renovations. Right now, we are closed for renovations while we're doing the lower bowl seating and getting the venue ready for the upcoming hockey and basketball season. So we took the venue offline for about 40 days, but what we have to understand is the venue season's about eight months, so we lost one month of that eight. So with 50 to 60% of our revenue coming from the arena, we know it's going to be a hit to our budget, and as happenstance, once you've made that decision, we, of course, had to turn shows away that went to other markets. But the new venue, we hope to make up that money going into '24 and '25. On insurance, this has always been an issue. Our insurance, we can only get one provider to even bid on the building because of the condition. With the new roof and with the new items, we're hoping to not only get more bidders, but now we're hoping to freeze the insurance raises, where it's been skyrocketing, and we've been given some initial signals. Once these projects are complete, we'll be able to keep it flat, which is going to lead to more money going to other parts of the venue and truly getting a return on our investment. And one issue that we wanted to share with you is revenue compression. With expenses going up on tours, gas costs more, bus drivers need more, the cost of food going up, everything's going up, but the amount of seats we have in the theater in some of these smaller events don't increase. And we're also getting pressure to keep prices low. So you get that revenue compression, so we have to take this into effect going into the future. It will eliminate some shows from our market because we just can't afford to put them on anymore. The other one is, is they don't travel with their equipment a lot. Used to bring sound and lights. Now they want to... Now they want to rent them locally. So then it becomes a venue expense. So again, it makes it a little bit tougher to make money on those shows and make them viable. So we really see opportunities up in '24. I love this, that we're a 50-50 market. We are truly, both sides of the fence. This isn't political. It's just know your market. We're the only 50-50 market in the state of, in the, only city in the state of Illinois that I'm aware of. So this was an example. In the same weekend, we did ZZ, or the same week, excuse me, we did ZZ Top, Anastasia the Musical, Walker Hayes, which is a country act, a ballet, and Chelsea Handler. All shows were successful. All shows played to very different markets. But it doesn't stop there. In the month of April, we had Chelsea Handler and Joe Coy, which tends to go to a left-leaning audience. But we also had Aaron Lewis and Dr. Jordan Peterson, which is more of a right-leaning audience. All shows sold out. So it shows we have people that want these events here, and we can bring them in from the outside. And if that's not enough this summer, you can't get more different urgent than having Ted Nugent and RuPaul's Drag Race. Both shows were four days apart, and both shows did very well. The Audience Builder Fund is something that we had wanted to see if there was better audience, more audiences out there that we weren't reaching. And this fund is to give those folks the opportunity to come see shows at a reasonable price and to see if we can create this audience that may already be there. We just have not had the opportunities to find out. So events like Buddy Guy, Black Violin, Maverick City Musical, and Monica are, these are the type of events we're going. And one of these that has really surprised us is Maverick City Music. We got this event. We were not in their demographics that they were looking for. And I'm really happy to say, if you want to go, you better buy a ticket quickly because we're at 92% sold and the show is still two months away. When we're talking about the growth in the sports markets, one of these is really fantastic is our, the group that brought us the Pokemon Championships. So it was going to be in another market. They had some challenges with the building. They brought it to us. They loved us so much that now are doing three small, they did three smaller events that drew about 500 to 750. And now this summer, we're going to host the regionals, and we're expecting 10,000 guests. By the way, didn't have to incentivize them. They just loved the property, and they really loved what they had when they came to Peoria. The volleyball tournament that we're looking at with 128 teams over three days, that came from ASM Global. It was in our lead system with our company, delivered it to us. We worked with them, and that event's coming next year. And that should be about 8,000 people over the three days. So again, we're getting our leads from all of our resources. I got to be honest, what we do is really cool. We love what we do. It's a passion project. We work long hours and have a good time. These are two great examples of how an act comes to the community. On the right, my right, there is a, Greta Van Fleet came to town. These guys are so popular, they can't leave their hotel rooms. They have fans circling everywhere they go. They had a day off. Not only did we arrange for a restaurant to open just for them so they could have a nice dinner, we also got them out on the golf course, and it left them with a really positive experience of Peoria, and we just had a great time with them. And one of my favorite human beings on the face of the earth is Joe Coy. He came to town, not only did his show sell out, he did great. Again, we talked to one of our local restaurants. Would they be mind opening up for him? And he stayed there till 2:00 in the morning. They were happy. He did, he did piano karaoke, well, it wasn't karaoke. He actually played the piano and sang for about the 20 people that were there and took pictures. And on his way out, he says, we will always come to your room. We will always come to Peoria. This is one of our favorite stops. By the way, this is his third time with us. You can't really tell. I don't think we put it up there, so I'll get to that later. But we also try to leave artists with something from Peoria. So what you can see in the upper left, everyone can kind of tell that's Jerry Seinfeld. What you might not be able to tell is that is 3,000 Rubik's cubes. We found a local artist who can make Rubik's cubes art. And that's something we put on display, and the act sees it. They post it on their website. It actually led to leads for their business. And again, it was no cost to them, and it was just kind of a cool thing in the selfies that were taken. Andre was great. He put this wonderful painting together for Cat Williams, something he could take with him and post on their site. Again, when they leave here, we want them to have a little taste of Peoria, and I would be remiss if I didn't talk about our great friends with DAGs. They do these amazing custom-made boards. And you can see it there with Thomas Rhett. We have found that more and more of our guests really love playing that when they go on the road. So looking ahead, I'm not going to go through all of these, but just look at the activity we have for October and November. Keep in mind, October, we don't open up the arena until October 27. So we'll see it start growing. We have December, and in 2024. One thing that did not make the cut that I'm really excited about is you may or may not know, we announced yesterday that a classic rock group, Journey, on their 50th anniversary tour is going out with Toto. And we're bringing them here in April. And that's a huge get for us because that's a legitimate A-level act. And then finally, I always try to tell my staff things we live by. And I'll share you this quote from Steve Jobs. And one of the things that I've always found out is we kind of lift, we're in an industry that doesn't have finality. It's constantly churning. So we trust our gut. And I can say that for my staff, they've had really good instincts, which has led to record results. And we see that momentum carrying into the next year. So that's my presentation.
Wow. I think we should clap. Congratulations. You're a little bit on the competitive side there, Mr. Edgar.
We have a phenomenal board, and I don't want that to be missed. We, everything that we do, Yvonne Greer-Batten and our entire group, we communicate daily. We have monthly financial meetings. They challenge us, but they also support us. And I have a staff that is the best in the business.
That's fantastic. How, when did you start your contract with ASM Global?
Me personally or the account?
The account.
The account has been here for 33 years.
Okay.
By the end of this contract, it'll be 33 years. That is SMG now is ASM Global will have been in this community.
Okay, I understand. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Tim Riegenbach. He is now the liaison, council liaison on the Peoria Civic Center Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Mr. Edgar, wow. Your enthusiasm is palatable, and the presentation just, I think, gets all of our adrenaline pumping a little bit. Where would we be without the vision of the civic, the city council from 50 years ago that put in place the foundation for that Peoria Civic Center? So thank you, Mr. Edgar. And it really has been my pleasure to serve as the council liaison since May. And I think it's fair to say, we all know at a high level, I mean, seeing this presentation just reinforces it about the amazing things happening. But I can tell you, the staff and the people working with Rick, that entire team, justice, is top-notch. And they really deserve a shout out here on the council floor for their commitment in running the facility on a day-to-day basis, to keeping it operable during COVID. You know, they didn't let it fall into disrepair. And, and just now overseeing this historic renovation with the bonding that we've provided, as well as the money coming in from the state. So hats off, Mr. Edgar, to you and your entire staff. And please express our deepest appreciation for what they do. And I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the Chair of the Authority, Yvonne Greer-Batten, and, and the leadership she provides along with Bob Gates, the attorney sitting right next to her there, and the, the team that they've built. That, the members of the authority, we appoint, the mayor appoints them, and we approve them. But getting to know them at a different level these last few months has been very enlightening for me. And their dedication to Peoria, representing a broad, diverse cross-section of our community, is also very obvious and appreciated. So great, great presentation. And we look forward to seeing what 2024 brings. And by the way, I do have my Maverick City tickets already, so.
Do you want to make a motion to receive and file?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will move to receive and file the presentation.
Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I just congratulate you and thank you, Mr. Edgar, for your terrific management of this wonderful facility of ours. I've been, I, I come to the Civic Center frequently for various things, and I can see some things going on. And I'm just, I think the community is very appreciative. I would like to ask you, what advantage is there in a Tier One relationship with Ticketmaster for Civic Center, for, for the public? Yes, just, just, what does that entail?
One, it gets us at the front of the line when there's new releases of equipment. So we're going to get it first. So we're already looking at some kiosks when you come in where you can just wave your phone versus the scanners that you see. And we're hopeful to get those sooner rather than later. And with that, we also get a little better percentage of the fees, which means our promoters can make more here than they can make in other places on per caps, which makes us more attractive. And when we are more attractive, you get more shows. So with more shows generates more tax revenue, more events coming in. This past year, we did 23 arena concert and entertainment events. The year preceding the current management team, we did six. So it's not, you're just thinking it's happening. It's happening. And last year in '22 was our best year. We beat that this year. And the team works tirelessly. And to be honest, it's the people. And now that we're going to get a venue, one of the biggest concerns we have from acts, our back of the house had not been renovated in more than 20 years. It was, to be quite frank, embarrassing. So to have a dressing room that's at the level when you get the Steve Martins in the world and the Jerry Seinfelds that make them comfortable. I'm going to tell you, comedians talk. They all talk. In fact, it was kind of fun in there. We know Joe Coy and Burt Kreischer were texting each other and stuff about, you've got to do this while you're in Peoria. The more we get a positive reaction, sometimes it becomes emotional. These are humans. I can play here, or I can play there. And if they say, I want to go to Rick's building, I just want to be very clear, it's not me. It's my team. They know that they're going to have a good day. And if you can give them a good day, that means a lot. So I hope I answered your question. But the Ticketmaster, it's about revenue, but it's also about customer service, getting people in quicker so they can have a better guest experience.
Okay. And just one other thing, on page four, your last column.
Okay.
I suppose you're going to be showing this to other people.
So it's open record. We've got it out there for anyone.
Okay. Your last column, I believe the numbers are reversed. You have the city number as the larger number, but the smaller, the smaller column. And the state number as the smaller number, but the larger column, unlike all the other bar graphs. Just so you could fix that for the next.
And I'll double check to make sure that's true. What it is, is the revenues are generated on t-shirt sales, and food and beverage goes to the state. And on tickets, and food goes to the city. So I'll double check that.
I'm not, I'm not questioning the numbers.
Fair enough.
It's the presentation of the bar, on the bar graph, I think is reversed.
Thank you. We will double check it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. First of all, impressive presentation. Thank you for the hard work that you and your team do in the Civic Center. And I appreciated the tour earlier this year and the ability to talk through some of the opportunities, challenges, and things that you guys do to make that event venue a huge success for our community. So thank you for that. A couple of questions here. First of all, can you share with us yet what the arcade improvement plan is?
We're in the design phase of that. So we, it has not been a dollar figure assigned to it. We're in the process of designing based on what we have in the budget before we'll go to our group. So we're probably 18 months out before that happens.
Okay. What's the progress through the list of major capital projects? And how has it been with the state revenue coming in to backfill those expenses?
On the, the ones that we've checked off are the ones that are complete. Other projects are ongoing. With the state revenue, we have to, we have about $300,000 that we, let me back, the BEP, we have to hit at least 13%. But we've done about 80% of our projects, and it's based on 13% of 100. So we're just about $300,000 shy. So we've asked for an amendment because we're well over that amount with what we've completed. That paperwork will be filed on October 1, and it's usually about a 12-week lead time. It's not exact because it's, you know, state government, but that's where we are today.
So we're hopeful to see that through this year's budget?
Well, we've, we'll, we'll submit the paperwork in October, and it's on their timeline, but we think it's going to be about 12 weeks. And so far, we've had $9 million in projects completed, and we're expecting another $5 million over the last quarter of this year.
Okay. And then something that I know that our, some of our constituents are concerned about, what's the plans and progress so far on the ice plant?
We're still in conversations with the hockey team. And we, both parties have agreed to not really discuss those terms out, out in public. And we, both parties have agreed to not really discuss those terms out, out in public. But what we've agreed is once we have a long-term commitment, then we'll be able to move forward. One of the challenges with that is the supply line chains are a year out. And we had a deadline this year if we wanted to do it next summer. So we're now looking at the summer of '25 to close the venue to do the ice.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate your presentation and your enthusiasm. Downtown development is a tentative key pillar for our upcoming strategic plan. Everyone is interested in developing our downtown and the Civic Center is an anchor of our downtown. Can you speak to, what are some amenities that you're feeling that could really complement the Civic Center? For maybe from what you're hearing from guests, is it retail, is it additional restaurants? What are some things that we need to be considering when we talk about developing our downtown and putting the right pieces around the Civic Center to really create this robust environment?
I don't want to come off flippant, but I'm going to tell you what I've been saying for five years. I need restaurants with kids menus. I need restaurants that attract families. To get a place where dad can still have a beer, but there's a kids menu. We don't, to my knowledge, and I apologize to anyone who may have this covered that I'm not aware of, I know of no place downtown that has a kids menu where a family goes in that may be on a budget and gets that $5 kids meal with something. And I think that would help us because next weekend, or this weekend coming up, excuse me, I have Bluey in the venue, and I know that may mean nothing to a lot of you, but we've sold over 6,000 tickets over four shows. It is doing phenomenal business. This is an event targeted at three-year-olds. And every single one of those folks, for the most part, are going to get in their cars and drive to outlying communities to take their kids out to eat after the show. It would be really awesome if they could walk across the street and have a place where they want to go as a family. And it's nothing against the places downtown. Jim's is phenomenal, Kenny's, all these places are here are great. But I, in other communities, you have like some shopping and things that would, you know, keep you downtown. And I'm not a city planner. What I promise to do is continue to bring people from outside of the area as well as have people inside the area come. And then I hope there's some entrepreneurs who want to keep them downtown and help build that community.
No, thank you for your feedback. I'm definitely that dad that needs that beer with the chicken tender kids meal. So that's all good. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Grab?
Mr. Edgar, I'm sure there are venture capitalists out there who have heard what you just said. We have a burgeoning restaurant industry downtown. More and more restaurants opening up. But you're right, it perhaps isn't addressing that niche where dad can have a relatively inexpensive drink and the kids can really enjoy their food. So all of you listening out there who want to make a buck, let's start taking a look at taking care of that niche. I want to ask about the glass arcade improvements. Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, it's so early in the process. I'm more than happy to have folks come in and we're in the process of figuring out with the budget dollars we have, what we can do and what makes the most sense for us today. So it's, when I say it's early in the process, we were trying to handle our other capital items and then figure out what we would have to address that. As a reminder, in 2019, I may be a year off, when we originally did this study, we had a $47 million bill. Everything has gone up in price. Ballpark, let's call it 60 million today. We still only have $45 million to address that with. So there are certain things that woke up and down on the list. So I would, we want to address it and we've come up with some sketch ideas, but nothing that's ready to be presented.
Can you tell the council what glass arcade means?
Absolutely. Because that's a, it's a little bit of a misnomer, isn't it? It's the, what you see from the City Hall, the glass area there. Initially, and folks that have been here longer, I'm always willing to learn, so I could be wrong on this. It was really meant to be a pass-through and we now use it as a functional space. So some of the challenges are, it's not climate-controlled. So it's a little challenging when we have like ILMEA in February and everybody has to wear winter coats to walk from one room to the other. So these are things that we would like to address with the revision.
It's not an issue of some of the glass coming loose anymore, I hope.
There are some foundation concerns with it that we are also addressing in the study.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, Mr. Edgar, Ms. Brierbatten, Mr. Gates. Appreciate you and congratulations on your success. We have a motion to receive and file. If there's no more comments, please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. Twenty-three dash three twenty-three is a communication from the City Manager and Chief Information Officer with request to approve the sole source service, excuse me, service agreement with eight-by-eight global cloud communications for the City of Peoria Telecommunication System Services in an amount not to exceed $200,000 to replace the city phone system. And this item requires two-thirds vote of the City Councilmembers voting and not less than six votes.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We'd actually like to defer this item until November 14th. We've got some work we still have to work out with the ETSB on this in terms of just how the handoffs are going to work between the equipment that the ETSB has provided in the ECC and the equipment that we would be replacing this with. So we would ask for that defer.
Move by Councilmember Grab, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach, to defer until November the 14th. Please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash three twenty-four is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Counsel with request to approve and authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Peoria and the State of Illinois Comptroller's Office for enrollment in the Local Debt Recovery Program.
Corporation Counsel, is this yours?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Direct snap rather than a handoff. The City Legal Department has been looking at improving the collection outcomes. We have, we're presently in discussion with our present collection agency to determine whether we're going to be extending that relationship or not. But one of the aspects of our collection efforts from many of our debts is the, years ago, the city participated with the Comptroller's Office and the Local Debt Recovery Program. This agreement would allow us to reestablish that relationship moving forward. The Local Debt Recovery Program is a very successful collaboration between the Comptroller's Office and local governments throughout Illinois. The Local Debt Recovery Program has served 475 local communities and has collected over $360 million. It's a very low-cost option. We usually play a factor 33% to 50% of what's collected if we use a collection agent for collections. But the Local Debt Recovery Program is free to the city to use. It charges a low fee to the folks who are paying like, I think it's $15 on their debt. So there's not a lot of added costs, which is helpful to the citizens who do owe us funds. I would point out that one issue that's come up in discussions with staff is that we need to develop a hardship program. The Local Debt Recovery Program insists that there be no other collection activities when they get the debt, meaning that we can't have liens on file and we can't make efforts to collect on our own. However, we can withdraw items from the Local Debt Recovery Program if, if we choose to as an organization. And we're able to do that and there's a process involved. We suspect that some of our residents who have ignored any opportunities to pay their debts to the city in the past will claim a hardship. We're developing internally a hardship program to present for council's consideration. There's a number of procedural and due process type steps that have to take place before the Local Debt Recovery Program will accept the debt. And that's some notices that we'll be undertaking if council approves this agreement. And then, once the Local Debt Recovery Program gets the debt, they send a notice. And then there's an interrupt of any state payments to the individual debtors until the city's debt is paid. And that's when we think that there'll be actually some attention paid by some people that might be eligible for a hardship program or might have an issue to raise with us. And we do have the option to withdraw those debts from the program and deal with those locally if we choose to. I, I would hope and I think that we'll see some improvement of collection rates. I know that we'll hit some hardship issues with some of our residents and we'll want to develop a clear policy for staff to be able to follow. We'll be developing that for council's consideration and approval. We'll be presenting that before any of these debts will actually be collected. So the staff will be well-guided by this group on how they're to treat those situations when they arise. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but this would require the agreement to be executed by yourself, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Hayes. And I was really pleased to see the inclusion of a low-income residence hardship program. And those details will come later in terms of how people become aware of that opportunity.
Right. Because we expect the volume of work, I think we're going to use some tools that we're already using to judge people's capacities through some of the other programs we run. And then we'll have to identify the staff that'll be operating in that environment so we have the capacity to take that up, as well as the parameters. And so we'll be developing that so that people who are able to establish need are able to get some relief or total relief from their debt depending on what the council's guidance is on the program we present.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move for approval, but I'd like to ask a question as well.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Corporation Counsel, what, or do you have an idea of what our qualifying debt is that would be in this, ultimately in this program?
The nature of the debts that would be collected would include our unpaid parking tickets, unpaid stormwater utility bills, unpaid work orders. You know, we do quite a bit of maintenance work on properties that aren't timely done by the residents. And so we're particularly sensitive about making a collection on those types of debts. And so any administrative judgments are eligible for that. Staff's concept of a debt limit to present to the program would be somewhere around $2,500 because that would outstrip the ability to collect against the average tax return. So we'll be utilizing the program for lower-level debts where the collection system is extremely inefficient and the local debt recovery's efficiency, as well as the amount of debts being collected, would be, would fit the program. For larger debts, we'll be pursuing collection activities either directly or through a third-party. Also, businesses are not eligible for, debts from businesses owed to the city are not eligible for the Local Debt Recovery Program and it's only individuals. We can only utilize the program for Illinois residents and not out-of-state residents. There's a fair amount of debt that we'll be still having to figure out whether to place with an extended relationship with our existing collection agency or find a different agency to serve our needs. And we're exploring those options.
Thank you. And do you have any sort of a dollar number as to what we're talking about?
I don't, but I can report back to you on the outstanding debts.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We have a motion to approve. If there's no more questions, please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash three twenty-five is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to receive and file a resolution from the Transportation Commission.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is pretty self-explanatory. We, we did receive a request for a proclamation, well, it was a resolution from the Transportation Commission. It was passed with some policy statements that the commission just wanted the council to affirm. At this point, it's really a receive and file because we do have later on the agenda the annual report. But we are, you know, continuing to follow the Complete Streets policy and implement it where possible and where, where we can afford it so that it is something that we're moving forward with.
Can I get a motion to receive and file? Move by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash three twenty-six is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R-3, single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 5709 North Hamilton Road.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. This is a short-term rental request. I think I'll ask Assistant Community Development Director Leah Allison to come forward.
Director. There you go. Thank you. So this is a request for a short-term rental for up to five guests in a three-bedroom home, properties at 5709 west, or I'm sorry, North Hamilton Road. It is located within the Rolling Acres neighborhood subdivision area. Aside from the, the normal conditions of a short-term rental complying with the codes, there's one additional condition to remove some gravel that is located along the driveway area. Are there any questions that I can answer?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmember Grab?
Well, I think everybody on the council knows my modus operandi pretty well by now. The fact that this was not placed on the consent agenda means I red-flagged it because my constituents red-flagged it because we didn't feel that it was consistent with the best interest of the Rolling Acres neighborhood, which I've had the privilege of representing for some 14 years. 12 years as an at-large councilman and now as a district councilperson. I'm very happy to see the president of the Rolling Acres Neighborhood Association here tonight, Virginia White. For so many years, she helped lead the way in putting on the Neighborhood Awards banquet. But I thought that in the interest of brevity and time, I would ask the council to give the privilege of the floor, allow the privilege of the floor to go to Mrs. Marcia Cutter, who has, is a longtime resident of Rolling Acres Neighborhood Association to enumerate some of the reasons why we all feel that this is not wise for this subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Grab. And thank you to Mayor Ali and the council. My name is indeed Marcia Cutter and I live in Rolling Acres and am a lifelong resident of the City of Peoria. I want to voice my opposition to the short-term rental under consideration at 5709 North Hamilton Road in Rolling Acres. My concern is the threat to the long-term stability of that neighborhood that continued approval of short-term rentals presents. Last year, the City Council, as you know, passed the ordinance allowing up to 3% of properties in a subdivision to be short-term rentals. Per the city's report to the Zoning Commission on September 7th, Rolling Acres could have up to 13 homes approved as short-term rentals and still be in compliance. But just today, I found out actually that number is 20. Rolling Acres already has two short-term rentals, although until today, I didn't really know where they were. But I'm very aware of exactly where the third property at 5709 North Hamilton is. I live next door. My husband and I do live next door and we are not at all happy about this proposal, nor are any of the neighbors with whom I have spoken. And so I am not alone in my concerns about short-term rental proliferation in Rolling Acres. Rolling Acres is an older neighborhood with a great location. Our homes are primarily single-family dwellings of modest size with driveways and lawns in a neighborhood with winding streets and no sidewalks. I really love it there. The neighborhood is multiracial, multi-ethnic, and multicultural. And the people who live there, for the most part, take good care of their homes. We are a blend of owner-occupied and long-term, true-long-term rental residents. We raise our kids, we send them to public school, we mow our lawns, we shovel the snow off our driveways, we repair our homes when needed, and we pay taxes. We are good neighbors and good citizens of Peoria. But every neighborhood has a tipping point that can lead to a gradual decline and deterioration of that neighborhood. And I fear the City of Peoria is leading us toward that tipping point with a shortsighted desire for sources of immediate revenue. We need long-term residents in Rolling Acres who will live in this subdivision for far more than 30 days. People whose children will attend our schools, folks who'll, who'll develop cordial relationships with their neighbors. We need residents who are not just passing through, but who will put down roots in this community and care what happens to it. But how can that happen? Through short-term rentals where strangers will come and go with alarming frequency? What benefits will Rolling Acres see from having an increasing number of short-term rentals here? Now here are some of the primary concerns. Number one, what impact will short-term rentals have on property values and on who will buy properties near these STRs? Will families want to move into a house next to an STR with the constant flow of tranchants, strangers, who are always coming and going perhaps at all hours of the day or night? We won't know what kind of people are there. So who will buy the properties close to STRs should those properties become available? More absentee landlords who may or may not take care of their properties? More investors who are more interested in making money from our neighborhood but who have no interest in us or our well-being? Number two, does Peoria have such an abundance of affordable homes that they can take 3% of those homes out of the mix? Three, we live close enough to the schools that the kids are not picked up by school buses. Many of them walk to and from school in the street. Because remember, we have no sidewalks. Most people living in the subdivision have driveways with either garages or carports. And the people on Hamilton Road in particular keep their vehicle, their vehicles off that busy street. With increasing, increased parking on the street around the short-term rental, there is an increased safety risk for pedestrians, especially schoolchildren. As one of the few through streets in Rolling Acres, Hamilton Road is busy with traffic. Fire trucks and ambulances use it all the time. There is parking allowed on the street, on the road, since there are no signs prohibiting it except after two inches of snow. STRs generally mean increased numbers of cars parking in front of the property or in front of other properties close by. Since the 5709 property has a single-car garage, most likely additional cars will end up parking on the street. Number five, and this is the one that's close to my heart. We will never be given the opportunity to develop any kind of relationship with these strangers. They will never contribute to the stability of our community with their ideas, hard work, involvement, humor, kindness, or concern because they'll be gone within a day, a week, or a month. So I ask you to take my words and ponder them as you consider this proposal and future requests for short-term rentals in Rolling Acres. Please do not put us on the slippery slope of neighborhood deterioration. We see too much of that already in our older neighborhoods. I thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Grab?
And Mayor, the reason I had Marcia come up and speak is this isn't even close. We've had some short-term rentals that I've moved to approve where neighborhood was kind of split 50/50 or 65/35. But this is what I've heard from everybody, from the moment this surface is too tight of a neighborhood, too densely populated, too many threats here. As it is now, they are renting it and they are able to rent it. It's not, they're deprived the use of their property. It's just that it's a much more intense use when you get down to the short-term rental aspects. I move to deny.
Sir, a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Bernice Gordon Young. Any more discussion? Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. In this case, I am going to agree with Councilman Grab's motion. In this case, I am going to agree with Councilman Grab's motion to deny based on some of the things that we talked about this afternoon. But I do want to caution some of the commentary that was just presented. Someone can still buy this and have, and the current owner can still have someone move in and out of this every 30 days under the current ordinances. So opposing the short-term rental isn't going to push homeownership, as well as the fact that a landlord may very well still buy this property, or the current owner can still use it as a rental, and that's not going to change homeownership either. And so I'm very sensitive to the fact that when this ordinance was put in place, that the denials needed to be strictly based on issues that the property specifically presented in the neighborhood and not a wholesale opposition to the concept of short-term rentals. And I don't want, you know, my vote here to be construed as an opposition to the concept of short-term rental, but my reasons being some of the things that the councilman and I talked about today and the reasons for this specific property, as well as the fact that I have not had any outreach or advocacy from the individual who is proposing the short-term rental, only the opposition from the neighborhood. So I'll support the denial.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have been on the side of approving most of these short-term rentals mainly because we, as a council, set up rules to follow. And if people follow the rules, I think we have to have a very, very important reason to pull the rug out from underneath them. The rules are objective. The opposition is generally subjective. Law has to be objective. People have to know what the law is. And if we don't like the law, we should change it. But if the law depends upon the eloquence, and I do mean eloquence, of a person like the lady who just spoke, I think she's a very fine lady, but that's not good law. So I will be opposed to the deferral, or to the denial. And I sympathize, but we spent a long, long time putting these rules together, and I think we have to stick by them or change them. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Gordon Young.
Well, I appreciate the comments of Councilmember Kelly. I think it's important that we look at the short-term rentals on a case-by-case basis, given the demographics. And I will say that I was just on Hamilton Road and parked around the corner and walked up the street so that I didn't cause a traffic hazard. And so I certainly understand just that aspect of it. But again, just looking at the community as a whole and the culture in that community, that is the reason why I agree with the denial.
Any other comments? The motion is to deny. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay. Kelly.
23-327 is a communication from the city manager and finance director, Comptroller, with request to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2023 revised annual budget relating to the use of Edward Settlement Funds in the amount of $125,000 for the city to complete additional homeowner roof replacements. And this item requires a two-thirds vote of the councilmembers' voting, no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. This is the budget amendment for the intergovernmental agreement that council approved at the last meeting.
Yes. Can I get a move by Councilmember Sears, seconded by Councilmember Allen? Any discussion? Councilmember Sears?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. All right. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
23-328 is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to concur with recommendation from the planning and zoning commission and staff to deny an ordinance amending existing special use ordinance number 13932 as amended in a Class C II large-scale commercial district for a shopping center to allow for two window signs with a total area of 214.5 square feet for the property located at 7611 North Grand Prairie Drive, commonly known as the Shops of Grand Prairie.
You're not going to read all those numbers? I'm just joking. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to ask Assistant Community Development Director Leah Allison to come forward to discuss this item.
Thank you. This is the new academy sports out at the Shops of Grand Prairie that has asked to amend the existing special use to allow for additional window signage that is in excess of what's allowed by the Unified Development Code. After review by the planning and zoning commission, they concurred with staff's recommendation, which is that it should comply with window signage and not deviate or be in excess of what's allowed. So that's why the proposal before you is a recommendation to deny any change to the regulations for window signage. Any questions that I can answer? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as always, thank you, Assistant Director Allison. I have spoke with both parties, including staff, and I would like to make a motion to defer this for two weeks as we looked at some alternative options, and then we'll come back and explore this matter at our next meeting in two weeks.
October 10th, I believe. Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
23-329 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to receive and file the complete streets report from the Transportation Commission Chair.
Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to our Public Works Director to talk through the report from the Transportation Commission on Complete Streets.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, council. This is the annual report on complete streets. It does work somewhat hand-in-glove with their budget recommendations that you heard in earlier proposal and where they'd like to see our focus be. Their charter is basically to provide sense of passage of the complete streets ordinance, where we stand and how we perform annually. Overall, I would say, as you look, and again, to the point of brevity, and you can see it in front of you, they've broken it out by number, and then, of course, paragraphs. We're performing, I would say, based upon the challenges we've faced on the four years I've been here, three of which being COVID-impacted in our budgets. Within the last two years, you've seen jumps in some areas like tree plantings, some of the things where we could make a concerted effort to improve on what complete streets are. Overall, we will always see, and the commission is aware, that what we want to do will always be driven by what we can do versus with the budget and the dollars that are available. Complete streets are ideal in their design. What you heard with the Spring Street design being a really good example of what it can look like, keeping in mind that is going to be a $9.5 million project to do that. And to do those things correctly, to engineer the designs within them, that is the time to bring those things to bear when you're doing new construction, reconstruction, and all of the things that complete streets are. When you're trying to retrofit, again, bike lanes are paint. They aren't barriers. They're paint, which means education is a big part of that. And as you're moving those things and trying to retrofit, lighting, the various types of lighting, the various types of sidewalk, the green infrastructure components. So to say that I'm not surprised by where we stand in this, and quite frankly, I'm relatively impressed with some of the numbers we have. The nose we do have, especially in tree planting, if you look at that one in particular, we missed the average. But on the year-over-year, we planted 110 trees in 2022, which brought that average up, but still didn't quite make the average. But again, we are improving. I think we are moving toward steadily a complete street philosophy and what we've adopted by ordinance to get there. We always make that consideration in design and whether we can make that stretch, but it will always be driven by the budget. And I know the commission's aware of that, and I know you're aware of that, and we'll be going into those deliberations very soon on the projects that UC bring, brought forward in the CIP. With that, I'll stand by for any questions you may have specific to the report.
Questions? Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Powers, when we get grants from Springfield and perhaps from Washington, but anyway, from Springfield to fix our streets, it often comes with, for major streets, et cetera, requirements that we have to do these things. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And if we don't do them, we don't get the money, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there any move anywhere for somebody to point out that paint does not prevent a bicyclist from getting hit or being killed on our streets?
A movement specific to that particular use of...
It was a facetious question. I'm sorry.
I know. It's education, councilor. Anytime you're retrofitting anything...
Well, yes, but, you know, if I make a mistake in my car, just a little, I just get distracted for a second, and I veer into that, I get a scratch on my car, and that person is dead. Now, to me, a long time ago, we decided we need to get pedestrians out of the street. You know why? Because they get hit by cars. They get hit by horses and buggies back in those days. Okay? So we haven't done a full job of that, but the goal is get pedestrians off the street, get them on sidewalks. Okay? Now, to me, and bicycles supposedly don't belong on sidewalks, okay? Because if you hit somebody, in that case, you might get a broken ankle, but you're not dead. Is there any talk, and this sounds to me like ideology, this does not sound to me like a real concept of safety, or safety is not part of the equation. You don't have to opine on that. But are you aware of any discussion in Springfield to say, you know, we need to get the bikes off the street?
To say I opine would say there are discussions at every level, to include the federal government, meaning federal highway and his monies move into that regard, because it wasn't all that long ago that the concerns relative to complete streets were what we always thought. If you didn't drive on it, it wasn't considered. It was move cars. Again, what you're seeing with Adams-Jefferson, the conversion one-way to two-way, a lot of those things are coming from a very high level and being discussed regularly. Complete streets, again, in concept, when you're looking at a city that's built out from an infrastructure perspective, where we have a lot of pavement that we don't need for the amount of volume we have or average daily traffic, if you will, if we're moving across it, the best we can do with the dollars we have is paint and education. But to your point, the laws have always been, as long as I've been alive, in fact, I can't believe that I remember this as a child, attending the rules of the road for a bicyclist. And they don't want you on a sidewalk because bicyclists hurt pedestrians. So we've always shared the road bicyclist with vehicular traffic. Hence, you go through those education courses. This is just another component of that, that the term we actually removed from a manual really with the share, meaning a shared lane. It is truly a dedicated bicycle lane that isn't that different from a vehicular lane that is separated by paint. So what we have today is a component of education and the ability to convert some of our streets, which is dual-purpose. One, it does share the excess pavement we have that we no longer need for the cars because we have more pavement than we need, and provide as safe as we can with the dollars we have, separation from the bicyclist and that active traffic lane. So I guess my opinion would be we are doing the best we can with the dollars we have without creating an actual barrier, which we will see on some of the bridges and so on. In fact, you're going to see a physical barrier on the Bob Michaels. It's coming through. There will be a barrier between the bicycle lane and the active traffic lane. That would be ideal in every situation. We simply don't have the budget to support it.
Director Powers, I have no doubt in my mind that you're doing the best you can. I'm not, I don't have a beef with you. I have a beef with what I was talking about. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? I get a motion to receive and file, moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Powers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
We are at unfinished business.
No unfinished business.
Then we would be on to new business.
Is there any new business, council? Councilmember Valpula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This Saturday at Riverplex, we are going to have a Walk for the Mind. It's actually done in remembrance of Mark Lindner, son of Rex Lindner. And this walk is to create awareness about brain cancer research, and it has been doing, it has been in Peoria for the past 21 years. So if anybody's interested, that's a good place to go and see what new developments are being made in this area of cancer research. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a, I'd like a request if we could have Director Doolin to come up. I had received some phone calls earlier about an issue at Parkview concerning leakages in one of the buildings. And for the benefit of those who are not here, could we just have Director Doolin come and give us an update on what they've done to try and rectify that situation?
I think he hears us, or he's getting a call. He's still in the building.
No, I was down in my office.
Okay. All righty.
Thank you for coming back. We were just wanting, for the benefit of the folks who are not here, if you could give us an update with regards to the leakage issues at Parkview and the building, the situation I spoke to you about earlier today.
Yes, ma'am. I believe we're talking about Building E at Parkview Gardens or Parkview Estates. They've had some problems the last couple of months with some water. Their drainage pipes were draining too close to the kind of foundation of the building. So water at times is seeping into common areas. Last Friday, we got a call with the rain we had, that they saw some additional rain coming in while they've been trying to go through their remediation efforts to get it corrected. We sent an inspector out to take a look. It was the common areas that were affected. They had people come in to do the dry out. They're in the process of ripping out the carpet. They've already finished the remediation of the environmental concerns they had at it, but that was mainly in the common areas, the coming into the entrance of the basement. So we believe they should have that wrapped up this week.
So we don't have people living in apartments that have water-soaked carpets in the area in the basement?
I do not know that as of right now. I do not believe that's the case.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You're welcome. Any other new business? Thank you, Director Doolin. Madam Clerk.
We have not received any citizen cards, and we do not have an executive session, so I believe it will be out of adjournment.
Can I get a motion, a move by Council... Can I get a motion, a move by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Sears? Please cast your ballots. Thank you for your service. Oh, you too. Thanks.
Hi.